All right, we don't have the gavel, but we're going to bring the meeting for, a special meeting for 11:30 2022 to order. Thank you all for coming and for being here tonight. Do roll call real quick. Steve Ball.
Here.
Phoebe Benziger.
Here.
Jan Chastain.
Here.
Chad Huffman.
Here.
Del Fee Jado is not here. Richard Rogers.
Here.
Ronald Cairns.
Here.
And I'm David Fisher, and I'm here. So first, we'll approve the minutes from 10:26. Do you guys have any issues with the minutes since they were presented?
No.
No? All right, then I will.
I move to accept as presented. I move to accept as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Staff, additions or deletions from tonight's agenda?
There are none.
Okay. In that case, we've got three agenda items, and so we'll start tonight. Oh, give me one second, guys. For those of you in the audience, just in case you don't have a copy of it, first on the agenda is a preliminary plat for the Cedar View subdivision. Second on the agenda is the Seasons subdivision rezone. And the third thing on the agenda is the Grove subdivision sketch plan. So if you're here for any of those, that's the order that will be presented tonight. And with that, we'll do Agenda Item 1, the preliminary plat.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'll start us off tonight. I have a brief presentation to share. Okay. So as mentioned, this is an amended preliminary plat application for the Cedar View subdivision. The Cedar View subdivision is located in eastern Montrose, east of South Hillcrest Drive and south of East Main Street and just east of Castle Avenue, Evan Street, et cetera. The property, which consists of these two parcels as shown here, highlighted in red, is approximately 17.32 acres in size. This is an amended preliminary plat, so portions of the subdivision have already been constructed and final-platted approximately 30 percent. This proposal consists of 86 single-family residential lots, which take up about 13.39 acres of the total site. The property is located in the R6 medium-density/manufactured housing district and is located adjacent to other R6 properties, as well as properties designated R3A, B2, B3, and P. It's just a review here of the subdivision process. Of course, you all know that the subdivision first has to go through a sketch plan, which that process will be demonstrated later tonight. This step does not consist of any formal action, but does serve as a means to provide guidance to the applicant. Then a subdivision goes through a preliminary plat, which requires staff and outside agency review, and is eventually brought forward to the Planning Commission and to the City Council for consideration. Upon approval, the applicant can begin with infrastructure improvements, and a preliminary plat is valid for five years. If there are remaining portions of the plat yet to be final-platted after those five years, the applicant can come back with an amended preliminary plat. The latest preliminary plat for this subdivision was approved in 2017, and so it's now time for a new approval. When reviewing subdivision applications, we do look to a number of things outlined in Section 475, Subsection A2 of the City of Montrose Municipal Code. For example, we do look at the conformance with the master plan and zoning, the relationship to topography, soils, drainage, flooding, et cetera, availability of utilities, drainage, et cetera, compatibility with the natural environment, adjacent streets and traffic flow, including pedestrian access, availability of fire, police, and emergency services, and impacts on local schools. As mentioned, we do look to our comprehensive plan as well. This is not a legally binding document, but does provide guidance for land use decisions. It may be possible for different sections of the comprehensive plan to conflict, and it is possible that a decision may not satisfy every aspect outlined in the comprehensive plan. This property is listed as residential mixed-density medium, which provides for a variety of residential types mixed within a neighborhood, including single-family homes, duplexes, and triplexes, as well as townhomes. Most of this designation lies in areas that have not yet been developed. As mentioned, the property is within the R6 district, which is intended to provide for a quiet medium-density development for single-family and duplex residences. Manufactured housing is allowed in these districts, provided they meet the performance standards within the city's municipal code. The proposed subdivision is consistent with our zoning regulations. And finally, here is the plat itself. For those members of the public who are interested, I know that these are very small on these screens and difficult to see. However, they are available online through our public meetings portal, and they're much easier to see there. This first page consists of the standard plat notes and the signature lines that we require on all of our plats. The second page shows the actual subdivision itself. As mentioned, 86 single-family lots are being created, as well as the necessary rights-of-way dedicated to the city, and there are also several open space tracks. And then this final page here shows the planned phasing for the subdivision. Note that these boundaries here are not binding, and depending on the timing of the development and market conditions, they may ultimately look a little different when it comes to the final plating, but this serves as a, provide an idea of the phasing. So in conclusion, staff finds that this preliminary plat is in compliance with the subdivision regulations and with the comprehensive plan. The proposal meets the intent of the zoning district. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat with the standard condition that we recommend with all preliminary plats. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have for staff or for the applicant.
All right. Thanks, William. Do you guys have questions for staff yet at this point? No? Nope?
One thing I might chime into. So this is a good example of, so the preliminary plats, they run for five years. This project started, you know, 15-some years ago. You know, the preliminary plats expire every five years and come in for renewals. So every time they come in for renewals, we revisit all of the civil design, you know, so geotech, traffic, water, sewer, drainage, all of those things. And this is a good example, and the reason we do that is, is conditions change. The water system changes, hydraulics change, drainage standards change. This one's a good example of drainage standards that have changed since the original construction. So some of the changes that this includes are more drainage facilities, more drainage ponds, all to meet modern drainage requirements. So just want to throw that out there that, you know, this isn't just a renewal, it gets fully revisited, and there are changes that come in the infrastructure from these things. Throw that out there.
Thanks, Scott. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Matt Miles, 1282 West Oak Grove Road, Montrose. You want me to tell the joke first?
It's okay, Matt. I assume you don't have much to say with the plat, but just want to give you the opportunity if you did.
All's good. We were, you know, like Scott said, it's just a renewal of an old plat we're moving forward with.
Okay. Did you guys have any questions for Mr. Miles?
I do, yes. So the current neighborhood is, it's being built out. Fits a unique need within our community. It's a different style, it's a different size of housing with the modular construction, but with the garages, which is really nice. What are the typical sizes of those lots that are currently there? What are the typical sizes of this new plat for all the lot sizes?
It's going to be a general continuation of exactly the same flavor. We didn't do any significant lot size changes, or we don't intend on changing the housing type. Was that your question?
That is, you're getting at.
Which is, you know, we're just going to continue on with what we're doing. The parks are in, completed, dedicated to the city, functional.
So the square footage is very similar from the front section to this upcoming section? Great. Where you put your garages, and the one thing I love about the neighborhood is it's typically, there's a big enough parking space to put work trucks. And there's always a little chuckle, because I'm always bringing up work trucks, because I don't like it when they go off into the street. They hang over the sidewalk, they peek into the street. Is there still enough spacing for a work-size truck? A, what is the, for example, the parking, what is the length of the parking pad for the vehicles?
That would be driven by the R6 front setback. Scott, do you know, or William, do you know what that is?
Based on the zone, yeah.
And then there's also the practical part of it. You know, we do try to, you know, keep two parking spaces in front of the garages.
And that would ultimately come through with the application for the building permit itself. As far as the front setback, I will pull that up right now.
My memory is it's a minimum of 15, but I'm just going by memory. I could be very wrong.
In the R6? I don't know.
So do you know what your typical pad size is? Or you're saying it varies based upon lot?
Well, I think they're 20. But I, Chad, it's been a long time since I've laid one of those out.
So the minimum front setback within the R6 zoning district is 25 feet?
25? That's why those trucks fit.
Yeah. No, that's my mental goal. So there we go.
I've been setting them back 25 feet, just to keep everyone happy.
Good enough. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay. I'm here for questions, if anybody's gone.
If you're moving forward, do you have any dates in mind? Do you think within years, or since it's already been 15 years? Do you think?
It's all market-driven. We'll build them as fast as the market will take them. So another 40, 50 years.
Okay. That's the way it could be.
It's the way it's looking.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, there we go. All right. You guys got any other questions for staff? No? No? Okay. In that case, we'll open up the public comment portion for this agenda item, if there's anybody out there. Is there anybody out there that wants to comment on this? No? Okay, cool.
I have a question.
You got to come up to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Yeah. Stacy Lee, 226 Castle Avenue, Montrose.
Hi, Stacy.
Hi. I was just curious, does this, this plot, does it show the drainage? Because they were saying that the drainage needs have changed, so I was just curious. Does this show where the drainage things are?
Stacy, we'll ask staff after we close the public comment portion.
Okay. That's it, thanks.
Yep. Okay, thanks. Yep. Is there anybody else? No? Okay. Then we will close the public comment portion. And Scott, could you talk about that for a minute? If anything did change, what changed from the last plat?
Yeah. So the plat itself usually covers all the lots and the easements, and create the boundaries for the lots. Separate from that, there's a whole design package for all the civil design. So that has the roads, utilities, drainage, road profiles, you know, all those things, sizes of everything. Those are reviewed by our staff, so that's been reviewed and approved. They're about, you know, typically 60 to 80 pages, so we don't put them in the packets. They're available to review if anybody in the public needs to review them, they're all public record. But for this particular application, they, everything kind of drains towards the west, so they've added some detention ponds, kind of towards the western end of, I think they end up taking up two or three lots. It used to be lots, they're now going to be additional detention ponds. The nice part is that we do have a discharge point here, so not the kind that has to infiltrate into the ground. They have outlet structures on them, so they drain after the storms. It just slows down that drainage to not create any flooding issues and to meet modern water quality requirements for discharging into the waterway. So I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. All right, guys. Any discussion necessary up here about whether it meets the code criteria or not? No? Chad, you good?
I'll just make a comment, that again, I think it's a nice, we need always a spectrum of different types of housing within our community. And so far, the front section of that neighborhood is very nice, and obviously, they're continuing to sell property. So the market says that there's an interest in that particular type of housing choice. So I think it looks nice, and it does meet the criteria from my perspective, and so I would be very supportive of it.
Yep. Anybody else? No? All right. Then if there's no other comment or question stuff, then I guess I'd entertain a motion. Wait a minute, guys.
I got it. Although, let me ask staff, it says on the following conditions. We don't have any conditions, so do I still read it as written?
It's the special conditions for the plat.
This one?
We have a standard condition that we recommend for all preliminary plats.
Yeah, that's the preliminary plat, I believe.
All right. I hereby make a motion to recommend to City Council approval of the preliminary plat application with the following conditions. The approval of this preliminary plat is expressly conditioned upon city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, and municipal code provisions are met, and that the applicant adequately addresses all of the staff concerns prior to the execution of the final plat. The city staff is not authorized by the approved to execute the final plat to all conditions being satisfied. Sorry, forgot my glasses. The request meets the code criteria based on the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing and in the staff report.
All right. Do I have a second? Richard? All right, thank you. Oh, sorry, that was Ronald. Sorry. Sorry, Ron. Any discussion on the motion necessary? Guys? No? No? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. The motion passes unanimously. All right. In that case, we'll go on to the second agenda item, which is?
Seasons.
The rezone.
Mrs. Jase.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Just for the record, Jase Hawke Waltz, I'm the Planning Manager here at the City of Montrose. So the item I have before you this evening is a request to rezone a property located near the northeast corner of Hillcrest in Miami from B4, which refers to neighborhood shopping, as well as R3A, which refers to medium-high density, to R4, which refers to residential high-density. The applicant for this request is AMG and Associates LLC. As shown on the slide here, the subject property is outlined in red. It's actually really two properties, kind of multiple parcels there, with a total acreage of 9.23 acres. So as shown on the slide here, there are two areas proposed to be rezoned. Area 1 is the property located adjacent to the northeast kind of corner there of Hillcrest in Miami, right at that roundabout that's shaded in pink, or salmon-colored, I suppose. This property is currently zoned B4. As I mentioned, that refers to neighborhood shopping. That area there totals 4.92 acres. The second area is a little bit further to the northeast there, more or less off Pennsylvania Street. This property is currently zoned R3A, which refers to residential medium-high density, and totals approximately 4.31 acres. For the request this evening, the applicant's proposing that both of these areas be rezoned to R4, or high-density residential. And I guess I'll point out, we did hear, obviously, a very similar proposal, I believe it was the end of October. So the applicant actually resented that application and did present or provide some additional information for this application. So in that packet that you received this evening, there should have been the, kind of more or less revised general project report from the applicant that stated, you know, some other components that weren't necessarily considered with that, with that initial review. So I just wanted to clear that up for you all, as well as the audience here. So this map reflects just more of an exact depiction of those boundaries to be rezoned. As shown here, Track 2, which is the kind of most northeastern tract, that's actually split-zoned. That's a single parcel right now that's split-zoned between R4 and R3A. So the applicant, with this request, would actually rezone the entirety of that parcel to R4 to eliminate any possible confusion when development actually does occur. So just wanted to kind of quickly point that out. Here's just a quick narrative of the application details. I've kind of already discussed them, but I'll just go over them a little bit more here. So the proposal is for the rezone of two portions of the Seasons subdivision and associated rights-of-way to R4. This does cure that split-zone, as I mentioned. One thing to note is really the difference between zone districts I wanted to bring up for you all tonight. So the R3A district that exists within that northeasternmost section that's proposed to be rezoned is very similar in terms of really all components to the R4 zone district. Setbacks and height requirements are identical, uses are pretty much identical. The only major difference, of course, is density. We heard this last time, and that's really the big component here. So the R3A district, that would allow for approximately 15 units per acre. That would be allowed currently today. Multifamily would also currently be allowed today. The R4 zone district, however, would allow for up to a maximum of 19 units per acre. So there is certainly a couple unit difference there between the two zone districts, and something I certainly wanted to point out tonight. Now regarding the other area that's being rezoned, or requesting to be rezoned tonight, that area is currently zoned B4, which refers to neighborhood shopping. That actually has lower setbacks than the B4 zone district. You could actually have zero-foot side yard setbacks within that zone. So that's something to kind of note and keep in mind. It does currently allow for multifamily as well, so that's another thing to keep in mind. With that said, the density within B4 has to match essentially what the density of R3A is. So as I mentioned earlier, it's essentially 15 units an acre with that zone, whereas it could be 19 units an acre with the R4 zone. So again, that's really kind of the big difference here, and that's one of the things that the applicant brought to the forefront and will likely speak on this evening. In that general project report they provided, and this was confirmed by staff, if the property were not rezoned, it could accommodate 164 units. If it were to be rezoned, as proposed this evening, it could accommodate up to 195 units. As stated in that general project report, the applicant is seeking a future site development proposal that would accommodate 192 units. So currently today, they could, what they're proposing would not be supported by the zoning, hence the reason for this rezone this evening. I'll let them really dive into the kind of more of the logistics, but I wanted to bring that to the forefront just for informational purposes. Showed on the screen here is the rezone criteria. These are fairly straightforward, but really, the rezone should not adversely affect the public health, safety, and welfare of the community, and the request should also be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So just kind of a rundown of R4. The proposal this evening, of course, is R4, as I mentioned, for that kind of just over nine acres there. The R4 high-density district is intended to provide for high-density multifamily residences and to allow for variable densities. This would allow for really a variety of types of residences. It could, in theory, provide opportunities for single-family housing, could also, of course, provide for townhomes or multifamily. So here's the comprehensive plan land-use map. To the left is kind of the more expansive, citywide one. To the right there is really the zoomed-in area. So the two properties listed are residential mixed-density medium and neighborhood center there. The mixed-density medium is the orange in the further northeast, and the neighborhood center is that more or less purple, right next to the intersection there. These really provide for a variety of residential types, from single-family homes to multifamily structures, such as townhomes and apartments, as well as mixed-use commercial-type uses. As far as the comp plan land-use map, that's what the future land-use map would reflect. On this slide, I pinpointed some goals and objectives directly from the comprehensive plan that are really worth noting here. I'm not going to read these verbatim, but staff does find that this request really does manage growth in an efficient and fiscally responsible way. What I mean by that is this is really infill, and infill is one of the most fiscally responsible ways for a city to essentially provide density, is you already have existing infrastructure in there that can accommodate higher densities, and from a fiscal standpoint, it really makes logical sense in that direction. The second is really, like I said, it kind of promotes infill and redevelopment in an area that's really well-served by city services. So there's not a whole lot of vacant properties as close to the core as this one, truthfully, that exists right now. The third is, provides housing variety and flexibility of density. As I mentioned, yes, the density can go up to 19 units per acre in the R4 district, but doesn't mean that it always will. It should be noted that the townhomes that exist kind of right in between these two areas, those are actually zoned R4 right now, that could allow for higher density. And then lastly, increases access to affordable housing. So with the option to provide for higher densities, certainly provides the option for more affordability. Then lastly, just based on the preceding information, as well as the staff reports, staff has found that the proposal meets the rezone criteria as outlined in Section 4-4-29, Subsection A, is in compliance with numerous goals of the comp plan, as I just discussed, and is compatible with existing uses in the surrounding area. In conclusion, staff does recommend the Planning Commission for recommendation of approval for this rezone request. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions. I do believe the applicant, there's one online and one attendance here in this audience that have a brief presentation, too.
All right. Thanks, Jase. Do you just want to bring the applicant up first, and then give the staff, or do you want to?
I just have one question for Jase. Jase, I'm sorry. Last meeting, we discussed the possibility of adding some additional conditions as one way to find a happy medium. Did we, are there any different conditions with today's proposal compared to previously?
Great question. And the answer to that is no, no additional conditions. We've been provided more information, and that's essentially the reasoning for the new submittal, but we're not requesting that Planning Commission put any additional conditions on this application.
Thank you.
I just really want to play with my microphone for a while. So Jase, let me just have you clarify, because that was great, what you said, and you talked about setbacks are smaller in an R4? Is that correct? Than it would be where, the way it is right now? Are less, in other words?
Yeah. Regarding setbacks, so setbacks are identical in the R3A and R4 zones, so that really wouldn't have any effect for that R3A property that would be presumably going to R4, proposed to be going to R4. For the B4, that actually allows for zero-foot setbacks, so that would allow for reduced setbacks compared to the R4 district. So if this moves forward with the rezone, there would actually be greater setbacks imposed with the R4 district compared to that B4 district. Hopefully, that makes sense.
Okay. Thank you.
I should step in here and clarify, that is for the theoretical zero-foot setbacks are for commercial uses. Thank you.
On the B4, Track 1, any height requirements in there?
Yeah. So both zones, well, all three zones that we're really discussing tonight, height maximum is 35 feet. So in the R3A zone districts, the maximum height is 35 feet, in the B4, it's 35 feet, and the R4 is 35 feet.
And a two-story is less, a three-story is 35 feet? Is that usually, depending upon the roof?
It depends. You certainly have a flat-roof three-story, once you start putting more architectural components into it, potentially, a three-story building could exceed 35 feet. So it depends. I think it's tough to know for certain sometimes.
So I know we talked about last time, but either way we go, both of them can have the same apartments?
Correct. Correct.
That's not going to change.
That is absolutely correct. Again, really, that the big difference here, as I indicated, is that density. It's really 15 units per acre compared to the 19 units per acre, and that does accommodate.
Right. And to rehash one more time, traffic study. We did a traffic study on it? And going to the larger tracks?
So traffic studies would come with site development. So they don't, for rezones, they don't do traffic studies specific to the rezone, because it's not knowing what's going to go in there. When they come in with site development, you have an actual unit count, and you can put trip generation to that.
So the traffic study can actually make it so you can't have that many units?
Certainly. It's rare. There's pretty good infrastructure out there, but that has happened. It's rare, but it has.
Yeah. From what I know, remembers, there's really not that much, until we actually see the plans, that we can really do anything about it.
Yeah. All that comes through traffic, infrastructure, drainage, all those things, all come through it. In this case, site development, if they do any subdivision as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Those all come through at that stage.
Yeah, any staff at this point? Okay. Anything else? All right. In that case, if the applicant is here and would like to come up, or is online and would like to talk, I don't know which one we're doing, but.
There we go.
Sorry, guys. If the applicant is out there and would like to come up and speak, now's the time. If the applicant's, if we're doing it through Zoom or whatever, then I guess we just got to figure that out, but. No?
Hi, this is Amanda with AMG. Can you guys hear me okay?
Hi, Amanda. Could you just, yeah, state your name and your address for us, please?
Yes.
But, no?
Hi, this is Amanda with AMG. Can you guys hear me okay?
Hi, Amanda. Could you just, yeah, state your name and your address for us, please?
Yes, my name is Amanda Locke, and my address is 1404 South Adams in Glendale, California.
All right, Amanda, do you have anything to add to the staff's presentation?
Yeah, I would like to add just a couple of things. Number one, thank you, Jace, for that presentation. And thank you to the commissioners for allowing us to revisit this rezone. I'm here tonight to provide a bit more context to what we're trying to accomplish with this rezone. So just first off, as shown on the screen right now, this is the rezone exhibit with the areas in blue and green hopefully changing to R4, as Jace explained. The reasoning, and I think Jace covered it pretty well, but the reasoning we would like to do the rezone is to, number one, fix that split-zone issue, but then also to create that greater density for a future project. And while it seems like a small number to increase, I think it, when you take into consideration construction costs and the market, having that extra density really is a big factor. And I also think that with the growing need of housing in the country, and I don't pretend to know Colorado specifically, but I understand that housing is needed. So I think our rezone would help accomplish some of those housing goals that Jace mentioned, such as housing variety and providing affordable housing. At this time, we don't have our income levels determined, but our intent is to provide workforce housing. If we could please go to the next slide? Thank you. So one thing that I do want to bring tonight, which wasn't discussed previously, is our intention to do a minor subdivision. So I am here on behalf of the owner, and he has way more knowledge on the history of this particular subdivision. But there's been a lot of different plat maps, a lot of things going on over several years, which has created a little bit of confusion in this particular area. And, you know, lot lines aren't lining up correctly, and easements aren't granted where they should be. So with our intent with the rezone, we would submit a minor subdivision. And the, some of the things we'll be fixing are some lot lines. I guess there's some non-conforming lots that were processed via the county process. When we come in, we want to do it with the city process and meet the city standards. Additionally, I think the biggest item that would be addressed here is Pennsylvania Street. So currently, Pennsylvania is owned by the property owner. And while it is currently a street and being used and accessed as such, there isn't actual granting of easement on this property. So our intent is to dedicate this street to the city, so that way it is, I guess, lack of a better word, official. It's actually now granted as access and used for utility purposes. And then we've had discussions with the city about this a couple of times since the last public hearing. So they are aware of our intent to submit this minor subdivision map. And we've, as you can see in this exhibit, Delmonte has been working closely on getting this application prepared. So with that said, that was just a bit more context to what we're trying to do here. I understand that both Fred Ballard and David Shield from Delmonte are in the audience. So if there's any technical questions or if they want to, you know, add any points or make any clarifications, please do so. But otherwise, I'm here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Amanda. You guys have any questions for the applicant? Nope? Down there? Ronald, go ahead.
Well, I do have detailed questions I want to ask, but she was saying that they were in the audience and they would be better to answer.
More technical stuff?
More technical stuff, yes.
Guys, any questions for Amanda? No? All right, Amanda, at this time, thank you for adding to the presentation. And we will try and find your Delmonte guys here in the audience and see if we can.
Okay.
Thanks.
Great, thank you.
All right. Guys from Delmonte.
Fred Ballard, Delmonte Consultants, 125 Colorado Avenue. And be glad to answer any questions. Again, thank the city staff. They've done a great job presenting the project tonight. And then Amanda added to that. And hopefully that answers some of the questions that had came up in the prior meeting and the need for the extra density. So be glad to answer any questions.
All right, thanks, Fred. Ronald, go ahead.
Yeah, this is technical. It's going to be that probably won't be until you actually submit the plans. But most of the audience the last time was really concerned about the apartments facing them. Now, from what I know, there's about a five-foot easement or slope that you're not going to be filling in. So anything you build is going to be four or five feet lower than the duplexes behind there. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, so of course, we still have the site plan to come. But yeah, I don't think there's any plan. It'd take too much field to fill that all in.
Yeah, I'm just trying to clear things up.
So, no, it would be, it would be a little bit lower than what the existing duplexes are.
And then they were concerned about everybody looking in at the apartment. But if you turn the apartment sideways, vertical, those windows would not be looking in to those duplexes. But once again, you can't, but that is something that you can take into consideration.
Yes, we would take that into consideration. You know, of course, you know, until we have approval, it don't make sense to move forward with the site plan, because it could change everything. So with the density, so.
Yeah, I'm just trying to give options.
Yeah. Yep, no problem, thank you.
You guys got any questions for Fred? No? Okay, Fred, thank you.
All right, thank you guys very much.
Last chance before public comment. Any questions for staff? Nope? Nope? Okay. I assume most of you are here to comment about this agenda item. So before we open public comment, let me read my little spiel here. Just kind of the rules of how this is going to work. All right, the public comment period for tonight's agenda item is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns on the agenda item being heard by the planning commission. If you'd like to comment this evening, please raise your hand, and you'll be called up to the podium. Prior to any comments, please state your name and address for the record. Your comment period will be limited to three minutes. Hopefully, the little light situation in here is working for us. And basically, it'll start on green, and when it turns to red, your time will be up, and we'll be asking you to finish your statement in whatever your comment is. If you guys have a spokesperson for any large group, you just need to identify that you're speaking for multiple people. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the planning commission and only to us. Please don't turn around and ask the applicant anything or to staff. We will address the applicant and staff if we need to after the fact. Please be aware that neither the planning commission, the city staff, nor the applicant are actually expected to respond or engage in a discussion or debate during your public comment period. We will ask questions of the staff after the comment period is over. The chairperson will allow all persons to speak once until everyone has had the opportunity to speak. Please limit your comments to the items that add to our discussion. If someone else has already mentioned the point or points that you wanted to make, please feel free to still state your agreement with or support of those items for the record. But be respectful of everyone else's time and refrain from just restating the same issues in repetition. Personal attacks and disagreements, personnel and employment matters, the use of profanity, or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs are prohibited as is any disorderly conduct which violates state or local law, and those shall not be permitted. Once the public comment period is closed, the planning commission will not accept any further public comment. All right, and with that, we will open the public comment portion of tonight's agenda item. Is there anyone out there? Sir?
My name is Ray Lalone. I live at 523 Stanford Lane in Montrose. And I'd like to point out that Montrose Code of Ordinances uses the word "safe" and "safety" 84 times that I was able to count. And so I know that your focus is on the safety of the residents. And the safety is an issue with this whole proposal. We have 19 new units that have been built, duplexes, triplexes, et cetera. 17 of those units are occupied by people 65 and older, 65 years of age and older. And many of them, of course, have dogs. So we have a lot of people that are walking the area. And there's already a lot of traffic, at least we think there is. But it's nothing compared to what's going to happen if this is approved, because I've lost track of the numbers, but it seems to me we're talking about adding 190 units to the northeast of the current townhouse builds. If that's correct, then there's a potential for close to 400 new vehicles. Now, the builder that has built our units, and by the way, they're all zero entry, so he's building units that do appeal to older people. The builder mentioned to me that, you know, he's going to have to reevaluate his building plans, too. Because if you're going to have three-story apartments, then he might have to do that also. Well, that could add up about half as many again, so let's say 80 more units, 160 more cars and trucks. And although the maps you saw were, for technical purposes, were excellent, of course, but what you can't see on those maps is that Pennsylvania Avenue will head towards a cemetery. Of course, Oregon already does, heads towards a cemetery. So you'll have to have a connector there between Pennsylvania and Oregon. But all of those will feed out into either Miami via Stanford Lane or to Hillcrest via Pennsylvania. And it is very much landlocked. You have the creek, you have the cemetery, and then you're going to try and jam how many units in there? And one other item with safety, and this is a little difficult to address, because we have had some vandalism in our area. And at least part of it was attributed to the mobile home park, a tenant that was in the mobile home park across Hillcrest from us.
Ray, if you could wrap it up, please.
You bet. If we're going to have low-income housing, then there is certainly more potential for the problems with the safety of the current and future residents. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Anyone else? Sir or ma'am, whoever?
We were lost in a sea of traffic and subdivisions and apartments. And we looked for another place, and we found it here in Montrose. And we love Montrose. They called it progress. Of course, having lived there for 30 years, we didn't. You all have the power and the decision to figure out what progress looks like here. You're talking about 190 apartments surrounding 30-some townhomes. And, you know, that, it seems like a lot to us. So I know there are people coming. We can't stop progress, but please consider those of us that are already here. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Sir?
My name is Roger Hilton. I live at 2129 Oregon Street. And it seemed to me the last time we were here, there was a concern about affordable working-class houses. Just down the street, off of Miami, just west of Hillcrest, there's 89 units going in. There's 160 units going in down by the river at Base Camp. And then there's 400 planned by Cobble Creek. Our little existing subdivision of townhomes would be better served if it stayed the same. And we all bought there with the idea of understanding the zoning. And we feel like we're being blindsided by this proposed change that could affect our property values. I would humbly ask you to just put yourself in our position. And how would you feel if you had apartments in your backyard? Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Is there anyone else? Yep? Ma'am in back?
Hey, Laura DeVore, 4016 Stanford Lane. Here last month, but basically, I'd like to reiterate the same things I said last time, plus just add on a little bit. I was born and raised in Montrose. I chose to move back to this community. I have owned my townhome for three years. I love the neighborhood. It's a great place to live. I think our townhomes already offer a really unique housing opportunity in Montrose. There's not a lot of other places like it. I think having increased density close by is not going to benefit our community. We already have density that's more unique than the surrounding area. So I guess I would just encourage you to consider that. And then also, there's been some comments about affordable housing and workforce housing. And a lot of the new housing that's come in has, it's already been advertised, that it doesn't really sound very affordable, and it doesn't sound like that's part of what was proposed, or at least what I interpreted from today. So I just ask for you to take that into consideration. And for those of us, it was commented that it's a small amount of density change, but it's a large amount for us already living in that community. So thank you so much.
Thanks, Laura. All right, somebody over here had their hand up? Yep?
Deja vu. So I'm Julia Seglin, 2129 Oregon Street. And we do oppose the change to high-density. I have two principal objections. The zoning change will reduce neighborhood property values. In our backyards, the change will include multifamily three-stories intended for lower working incomes, built on smaller lots with higher density. And most of us are of retirement age, and some are on fixed incomes. So to move, we would lose. We wanted a quiet place to enjoy our lives as we age. Number two, what is the quality and environmental impact of the proposed changes on the Cedar Creek, the Natural Creek, and the drainage area, the cemetery, and the parking lots and utilities going in? All that's going to make an effect. I feel we have a right to see these studies before a zoning change and be implemented. Because if you change it, and then it doesn't work, it doesn't work. You, as a member of the planning commission, on your website says you have a passion for the Montrose community, willing to prioritize what best of the community over what is best individually. The city is to ensure environmental protection, public safety, and a rich quality of life. I'm asking, please do not change high-density in our beloved neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
I'm Eugene Downs. I live at 243 Castle Avenue, right adjacent to the creek. And in looking at the preliminary plat on Cedar View, it doesn't delineate very clearly the fact that the first new street in the subdivision that is going to be approved also includes extending an unnamed street to the floodplain of the creek. Is that the intention, to build that extension over into the other subdivision, where will be the three? be the three high-density houses, or apartments, excuse me? That's a question.
All right, is that, is all you had? Eugene, we can't, we're not gonna answer it right now. We'll answer it when we're done with the public comment portion.
You can't answer the question?
Not, not right now, no. After, after the public comment portion, then we can ask staff, and we can get your question answered. All right, thank you. Ma'am?
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Mary Tarr. I own seven units, just finished completed on Stanford Lane. And the reason I bought and invested my money into this subdivision was because of the character. I built units similar to what is already existing there, at the same height, the same look, same thing. I'm also one of the board members of HOA. And part of my reason for, for building there and investing is the fact that it was a retirement community that most of the tenants were, I mean, most of the residents were over sixty-five. I feel like it would be a really detriment to this community because I was over there the other day checking on everything, and it was two o'clock in the afternoon, and it took me ten minutes to turn right on Hillcrest. I don't think that we can put in this high density to be able to get cars in and out, the police department, emergency fire department, with the amount of housing that we'd have to look at putting in there. And five years from now, the Stanford group who built those will probably go to high-density as also, because why wouldn't they? Why wouldn't they? So that, we're not just looking at the increase now, but the increase of the other builder adding on more high-density. And there's no other access in and out except for Stanford Lane and Pennsylvania. So my biggest concern is for my neighbors. I mean, I'm very conscious of the age group, and that there is a lot of people walking. And I know I'm repeating, I apologize. I know that the city of Montrose needs housing bad, but I just think that the character and the safety are all very viable things that you, as the planning committee, have to control. Because I'm originally from Austin, and I'm in commercial real estate there, and we can't do any rezone until we know what we're putting there. We have to canvass the community, we have to make sure that it's not affecting them in a bad way. And so we feel that, or I feel that, as you, you're, you're the guard. You're the one that is looking at what's gonna happen to Montrose now and in the future. And if you're not planning correctly, and you put all these housing, and then you don't have the infrastructure such as the roads, I mean, I've heard Miami's gonna be widened, and there's twenty-one hundred homes coming down Miami. And I know that it's thirty miles an hour on Hillcrest. People don't go thirty miles an hour. They go thirty-five and forty.
If you could wrap up, Mary.
Okay. So I, I really wish that, or I hope that you will take that in consideration and understand why we are so alarmed about the high-density housing.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I thought I saw another couple hands. Yep, sir?
I'm Harold Murphy, and I own three units over there on Miami, corner of Hillcrest and Miami. And I'm here mainly because of my tenants concerned for their safety and with the high-density, because I've got some elderly tenants. The, one of the things I heard tonight about studying the traffic after the preliminary plan is put in, or the development plan, seemed to me like that should have been studied before you even get to this point. Because Hillcrest is now a bypass, and if you ever travel it very much, the traffic is horrible right now. And to add that many more residents is just gonna be, you know, it's gonna mess everything up. But basically, I just wanna go on the record as being against the high-density, and I think it should stay like it is.
All right, thanks, Harold. All right, is there one other hand over there somewhere?
Good evening. My name is Dustin Orth, eighty-two, thirty-three, sixty-one, fifty Road. My mother-in-law lives on Stanford, and obviously, we're concerned because of high-density. There's a couple things that some people have kind of glanced on. Crime will go up with an increase of that many people in that such small of an area. We have the low-income housing. Some people will say, oh, no, don't do that. It will go up. Also, the commercial zoning change up in the front, it's currently for like small strip mall or something like that with the housing on top of it. A lot of the people moved into that area in those townhomes for the possibility of having like a coffee shop or a laundromat or something like that up front. Montrose does not have enough, at least I own a business, and I feel that there isn't enough commercial available spread throughout the city. It seems to be all located in certain regions, spread out, easier access. The traffic, obviously, has been nailed to the floor. It's a lot now, and it will be a lot worse with an increase of approximately fifty to sixty cars. I know they say one point five cars per. I think it's two to two and a half at least. Because if you look at some of the other areas, there's tons of vehicles for an amount of housing. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Dustin. And was there one? Yep.
My name is Dustin Hayward, five twenty-six Stanford Lane. I'd like to go on the record as well as being against the, the increased amount of houses. Everything's been touched on. I agree with. Thing that I did not hear mentioned was the proximity to the school to the west, which is pretty much blocked down. And children running around at all those access points. And I can say also that I have changed my schedule when I'm in town to not go anywhere during rush hours since the roundabout has been added. It is just a crazy thoroughfare. There's a lot of road rage and honking, and it's kind of entertaining from my backyard, but the addition is just, it's, if you had any idea, you would, wouldn't even question that it's a bad idea to put that many more houses in that area. Also, I walk places, and I walk across that street. There's not a real good place to get across there right now for pedestrians. So again, the increased traffic. There's also a turning lane that turns into the trailer park with the back access, the, whatever that other road is. That turning lane is extremely tight, just even as it is. I've almost been in a head-on at least twice there. So I do think that there needs to be some things looked at before this moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dustin.
Stacy, the two two six Castle Avenue, Montrose. I'd like to go on record that I concur with the thought of having the impact of traffic with the proposed changes done before the zoning change is approved, although it sounds like that may not be your policy. And secondly, in terms of the welfare and safety of people in the community, currently, people walk, walk their dogs or just walk. It's very nice to see that we live in a safe neighborhood where people can walk about and, and interact with each other. And I believe that if there was a unit that had a hundred and ninety units, that, that would probably impede that feeling of safety and well-being for people. And, that's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Stacy. Is there anyone else? Yep.
My name is Jerry Heimbigner. I live at four twenty-seven Stanford Lane. Well, it's already been brought up a few times, but it's about the traffic. I think if everybody here could understand what we're talking about, common sense would tell you that this isn't gonna work. To begin with, I live on Stanford. Stanford is one and a half blocks long. Don't forget that. One and a half blocks long. One side of it has Miami, when the other side, you go into Pennsylvania. The only way you can go from there to Pennsylvania, and it goes down to Hillcrest. It, it, going down Hillcrest to turn left off of a, going down Miami to turn left on the Hillcrest, it's impossible. There's people that sit there for thirty minutes waiting to cross. The, the Hillcrest, once they get through, well, they fly through the roundabout to begin with, because there's a hill that comes down. And once they get through that, I guarantee you, they're going thirty-five or forty. They, and same thing for Miami. Miami has become a, a raceway. I mean, we, we walk our dogs up there, and it's scary, because these cars come, are coming down Miami fifty, sixty miles an hour. I mean, it's hard to believe, but they are. You see a car doing the speed limit, you look at them like, is there something wrong with you? So the, this, the, the little space that Townsend has to accommodate that many cars, to me, doesn't seem practical. And we, we didn't wanna buy a place on a street where when you backed out of your driveway, you would have to wait forever to pull up, get back onto the street so you could go where you wanted to go. And that's what's gonna happen. There's, I don't see anything that else work any other way. And I just ask that you would take that into consideration. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jerry. Yep.
Doug Lennon, twenty thirty Miami Road. My two big concerns, my wife and me just moved here, well, not just, four years ago from Fort Collins. My two big concerns is bringing down property value and then crime. We still have old-school mailboxes. We don't even have lock boxes. We've only had the mail disappear once, and I can imagine with a lot higher people, things like that are gonna change. Those are really my only two concerns.
All right, thank you, Doug. Ma'am? Yep. Yep, you.
My name is Vicky Lalone, and I live at five two three Stanford Lane. We live on the end of Stanford Lane, closest to Miami. As Jerry said, if you could visualize, this is not a long street. It is only a block and a half. I wanna reiterate that I am one of those that's over seventy. I go out and walk a lot, but not lately. But our neighbors do walk a lot. And we have a ninety-year-old lady who goes out every day and walks, even if she takes her walker. That is because our street is safe, it's protected. And if you bring in all of this traffic, then all of these people that do like to go out and walk and walk their dogs and feel safe and, and don't have to worry about traffic because, and we all walk to our mailbox, which is at Pennsylvania and Stanford. I know we have to worry about housing for other people and apartments. I wanna advocate for the older people who are trying to find a safe neighborhood to finish their lives. That's all we ask for. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. Anyone else? Going once? Oh, there we go.
I live at four two seven Stanford Lane. And as everybody has said, the traffic is a major, major issue right now. Coming south, or north, I'm sorry, down Hillcrest into the roundabout, the corner on the north side, northeast side, it's a blind corner. So you're taking your life in your hands to pull out into that roundabout because of the way they drive. And saying that, we never have any police around. There's never any patrolling to try to control the amount of speed that these cars do. And I understand we live in a very fast-paced society now, but somebody's gonna get killed. And the cars coming down Miami going west, it's an absolute speedway down there. So if you put all of this housing in, they're gonna come out Stanford, you gotta make a right-hand turn to go into that roundabout. It's gonna line traffic all the way back up Stanford to Pennsylvania. There's not enough time for that roundabout to clear when you're getting that many cars turning right off of Stanford with the amount of traffic coming down Miami at the speed that they're coming down there. And I know this lady is bored with this, but if you could imagine trying to walk or function there, and I understand that the police is shorthanded now, how are they gonna accommodate this? And I've talked to some of the businesses that are on Hillcrest. Sometimes it'll take them thirty minutes on Pennsylvania to turn left onto Hillcrest with the amount of traffic right now. So safety is a major, major concern. I don't think anybody is against building and filling that area in. It's, it's a prime location. But I think it needs to be considered of what's already there with the amount of, the age of people and what they're projecting to go in there that's gonna affect the people that have already lived there, basically under some pretty false pretenses. Because when we first were, moved there, the first thing we were hit with was a lawsuit from these people that are wanting to build there now. And they had to get a lost penance against them. And now this comes up. So it's just one thing after another, which basically, I think I speak for the majority of my neighbors, at our age, we're not really very appreciative of it. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. And I think there was one other hand up as well? No? Maybe? Maybe I made that up? All right, anybody else? No? Going once? Going twice? All right, we're gonna close the public comment portion of tonight's second agenda item. And that means bringing it back up here. Before we start our conversation up here, guys, and before we start asking any questions or anything else, I just want to make sure, mainly because this was already brought to us once, and obviously is coming back, firstly, that this is a new, it's a new hearing. So we are considering the things that were presented this evening. As far as all of us, remember, our job up here is not, we don't have to get to consensus. We just have to be able to explain why we're thinking, how we're thinking. And with that, I'll open up the, our, our conversation and question time for, to the group. Well, yeah, if you wanna start asking questions of staff, now's the time.
James, can you, from a city point of view, define what you feel is affordable housing?
I think one thing to consider this evening is that's not the purpose of tonight's meeting, right? So in theory, this property could be developed with affordable housing, low-income housing, market-rate housing, single-family residential townhomes. I, I think that we shouldn't be getting stuck on just this fact of affordable, low-income, these, these concepts, because that's not what we're looking at tonight. Truthfully, that's not even something from, from low-income or market rate. That's not something we would look at at the site plan stage either. It, it's still a use by right, so.
And that question was not directed to this particular property. It was a broad, teachable moment for me. When we look at all this stuff, and it says, or we get developers that say, oh, I'm gonna build affordable housing. It's like, what, what really does that mean? So you're... So, you're telling me, A, you're not really able to answer that question tonight?
I think that's fair. I don't think it's pertinent to the request tonight. I'll state that.
Okay.
Jace, on that note, because you're right, but because I think, obviously, I wasn't here the last meeting, but I believe that that kind of question that Phoebe just had probably comes up a lot. Obviously, a lot of folks out there are having these questions that are not addressed with a rezone. Could you, without going down a rabbit hole, just go over real quick for all of us, but also for the folks in our audience tonight, not the entire process, but maybe why the process is the way it is? You know, why aren't traffic studies done now? Why aren't we talking about what the potential use could be if the applicant is kind of given some idea? Could you just talk about that real quick?
Sure. Yeah. So, generally speaking, you know, the first step in a development process, if a property needs to be rezoned, is of course the rezone. If an applicant or a developer has a development in mind, the rezone is really the first step. They don't want to dump tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars, even sometimes, into civil plans for, let's say, an apartment complex or a subdivision unless they know it's a use-by-right. So, really, the first step is the rezone process when it comes to these development applications, unless it's a use-by-right, in which case it would just go straight to a subdivision review or a site plan review. Now, in those stages, that is really when we dive into the nitty-gritty details of the civil plan sets for all the engineering, of the studies for drainage, and really anything else related to infrastructure. And those, and the applicant can certainly speak to this more so than myself, but that's when costs really start to add up. And that's the reason that they don't provide a lot of those studies on the front end for the rezone. Now, they certainly could, but it's very rare, I'll say that. And that was not done in this case either. And it's not required to be done. And it's not required to be done in most jurisdictions I've worked at and seen as well. So, generally speaking, that's kind of the process with the rezone going into the site planning and subdivision components. And the extensive reviews are really done in those, at those times, to really kick it out to all entities within the city, external to the city, fire district, COT, whoever it might be, to really dive into the details of all the plans. I'll probably look to my colleagues maybe to add on to that.
Yeah, I think the other piece of that is just the speculation, too. So, you know, when a zoning comes in, it could be anything, again, from single-family homes to the top. So, you know, a lot of times, they wait to do the traffic studies until you know the exact number of units. You do the hydraulic studies on the water system, you know the exact number of units so you can know what those impacts are going to be with certainty. Anything else? At this stage, it would just be speculation, and it's just not efficient. You spend $100,000 or something on all those studies, and then the market changes and your plan changes. That would just be wasted money, and that would hinder development.
And Scott, again, I think Ronald brought it up earlier, but at that stage, if there were issues that came from studies and, you know, city code gets involved, building code, whatever, you as the city, before it ever comes to us or City Council, you will work with the developer to be like, hey, you can't do... Whatever you planned here isn't going to work. And so, go back to the drawing board.
Certainly. Yep. So, all, you know, down, again, drainage, utilities, water, sewer, traffic, they all have established standards of what acceptable levels of service or criteria are, trigger points for good, no good, you know, kind of thing. And we have codes that protect all of that for us. And so, and that's what we have to go back to. We can't arbitrarily say, well, we don't like traffic, we don't like this kind of housing, or things of that sort. At the end of the day, we compare it to an industry standard of what is acceptable and what is safe so that we're consistent across the board. Because, as you can imagine, without that, you're different everywhere, and you're opening yourselves up to lawsuit and impacting people's land rights within, to develop their land, things of that sort. That answers the question.
Yep. Thanks, Scott. And I would just say, for all of us, as we continue the discussion tonight, if there's something that you want to bring up, like the issue that Phoebe just did, if we just please relate it back to how your line of questioning is going to justify whether this application meets the code criteria or does not meet the code criteria. Just that way, it's clear for everybody in the audience and for staff, kind of what we're thinking and why we're thinking it.
One thing I'll toss in, too, just regarding affordable housing, because I know that is a comprehensive plan goal, right? And I actually state that in my slide here as Housing in Neighborhoods Goal Number Two, Affordable Housing, and increasing access to affordable housing. Really, as you add higher densities, as you add more units to a market, that creates affordability in some sense, too, right? Because as you add more units, you create essentially more supply. And you have a dynamic in supply-demand that shifts a little bit, that can, you know, sometimes bring rent rates down if it is market rates, or, you know, different types of product and things like that. So, I don't have a definition of affordable housing. I think if you ask 10 planners, you'd get 10 different answers. But I guess, just to put it in context for this project and that particular goal, I figured I'd just bring that up.
Thanks, Jace. Go ahead, Steve.
Question, I think it's for Scott. This sort of type of thing has come up before. So, we know we haven't done the traffic study yet and heard the reason why it hasn't been done, but can you talk a little bit about... And just to summarize, what you're saying is, even though it's not done now, even if it was rezoned, nothing would be built there until the traffic study was done? Yeah. Yeah. And so, when the traffic study's done, I know in the past it's come up that one thing that you look at, you mention a lot, is few times at stop signs. But folks tonight were mentioning specific things that they had, the concerns that they had about traffic. Folks mentioned, you know, everything from speeding on the road, you know, which is probably not the traffic study, but they mentioned speeding, they mentioned wait times, there's not a stop sign anymore there, but say, there are times turning out of very specific streets in that neighborhood. And then they mentioned traffic on that specific street. Is it Stanford? Sanford? Whatever the street name is there. And can you speak to whether those specific concerns would be something that would show up in a traffic report or not? And that's not, you know, no is okay, but is that... Are those types of concerns something that would be looked at? Or in what way would they be looked at in a traffic report that would go on for this housing site?
Yep. Yep. So, typically, the things that get out of a traffic report are capacities, queues, delays, volumes, and like turn lane warrants. So, you know, you have certain volumes, for safety purposes, you end up... You hit trigger points for the need for like right turn lanes, left turn lanes, acceleration lanes, things of that sort. Then they look at the intersections that are impacted as that traffic distributes out through the network. So, usually, you're going, you know, several major intersections out. So, for example, you know, Woods Crossing that just did that traffic study, it included intersections as far as Niagara and Hillcrest. So, that's the far northeastern portion of town. And by the time, you know, so much traffic contributed that it's going through the network, you're looking at all of those. So, and then with that are capacities of those intersections. There's acceptable delays, acceptable queues, acceptable capacity. Can those intersections handle that traffic? And is it within, you know, the acceptable standards? The idea being, once you get over those acceptable standards, bad things start happening, both from an efficiency standpoint, so people are waiting a long time, they can't get around, your system starts kind of breaking down. So, it's, you know, inconvenient for those motorists, but also the safety. When an intersection, and there's, you know, you're sitting there waiting for three minutes, four minutes to get out of an intersection, you're more likely to do something risky and try and shoot a gap that... Because you have, you see that car, line of cars behind you, and you feel pressured, and you go. So, that's kind of how the safety pieces of that fall in. The other piece of that are, you know, roadways have a capacity volume-wise. So, within residential areas, you know, you can have quite a bit of traffic loading into a residential street. Typically, you're looking at about 1,000 vehicles per day is kind of the typical standard you target on a residential street. So, those are all things that they would quantify and see if you're within those thresholds, and that's all within our codes as well. And that's how they're built. You know, so there's... Our rights of way are built, and our standards are such that, you know, they're intended for that volume of traffic. And if you get above that, you're now into a collector road or a minor arterial in order to maintain that continuity. As far as, you know, the overall traffic and safety, I mean, that's our biggest challenge as a community. As we grow, traffic grows, as interest in Montrose grows, you know, the tourism floodgates are open, you know. There's a very noticeable uptick in traffic in town, and our job is to try and, with the resources we have, stay ahead of that as best we can. You know, the wider, modern roads are obviously better. You have turn lanes, bike lanes, detached sidewalks, all those things. We build all new stuff to those standards to meet that and are working to stay ahead of it. For example, you know, as it applies to this project, some of the things we're working on, we just secured the land this year for the... To complete the 6700 extension. So, that's the missing link between Sunnyside and Miami. That will take, and that ultimately will connect down through the bridges to Ogden Road probably within the next five years. That creates, and that's our job, is to create alternates to Townsend, alternates to Hillcrest. So, you have Townsend, then you have Hillcrest, 6700, those are your belt routes on the eastern side. Rio Grande, getting that connected and finished on the western side to, you know, give procity to the system, give that traffic somewhere to go and have it not all funnel to Hillcrest. So, you know, that's one of the ways that we are working to stay ahead. You give some of that traffic that is now, has no choice but to go to Hillcrest or Townsend, gives it a place to go on 6700. That takes most pressure off because, you know, the traffic is coming no matter what we do. And we need to try and stay ahead of it, and that's what our capital planning efforts and our traffic modeling works to do. You know, that being said, there's a lot to do. You know, there's 40-plus million of capital projects we could do today, and we just have to use our resources in the right places to try and maintain that safety throughout our system.
So, just to clarify, specifically for folks in the audience today, so the traffic study would include, say, measuring at those specific intersections turning out at Pennsylvania and at Stanford?
Absolutely.
There would be a measurement at that? And then the safety standards for the... That you'd be measuring at the residential, in the residential capacity of those? And that includes, I'm assuming pedestrian safety is included in... Now, that is some perception of someone's safety, but that is something that's included in capacities when you look at what applies to residential streets.
Yes. So, you've got the vehicle focus, and on the pedestrian side, we're looking at warrants for crosswalks, when you hit certain warrants for different levels of crosswalks, and, you know, where to funnel the pedestrian network into the safe intersections that are designed for those crossings. You don't want to crosswalk just anywhere because a lot of times, if they sit empty, people get complacent, start blowing through them. So, we... It's absolutely part of the... It's more on the civil design, just making sure that you have safe pedestrian routes to and from the development, especially at this density, to make sure that people don't... Aren't left to walk on a shoulder or something somewhere to get into our sidewalk network.
But that study comes after the zoning?
That comes as part of site development. So, that's once they have, once we know what the neighborhood's going to be. You know, so if it's, you know, if it ends up developing as single-family residential lots, and there's 20 units in there, that's obviously going to have a very different traffic loading and pedestrian loading than, you know, a couple hundred apartment units or something like that. So, so those are done once... Those are done for the specific proposed development.
So, I have another question. At this point, there's only two egresses into that property?
Yes, Stanford and Pennsylvania are the two into this.
And there's no... Nothing in the plan to include a different kind of way in and out?
No. Those are the... Those remain the two for this area. It's, you know, you're landlocked by the Dry Cedar Creek and then the cemetery on the east.
I guess I want to clarify and disagree, or maybe correct myself. Let's go back to one of the questions that came up from the citizens. There was a connection that goes into Castle, or that neighborhood, the Matt Miles neighborhood. Call that an extra egress with fire, emergency, et cetera. That is going to take place where they will connect? Oh, they're not going to...
No. So, that was... They master-planned it that way a long time ago when this, when that area originally developed. That kind of went away, I want to say like seven or eight years ago, when they revised some stuff on Cedar View. The cost-benefit of another bridge over Dry Cedar Creek, Dry... Or not Dry Cedar Creek, Cedar Creek. Montrose Royale, yeah, Cedar Creek. The cost-benefit of that, to have it that close to the arterials, doesn't make the most sense. So, you know, modern, looking at it for modern master planning and working into the comp plan, that was eliminated. And then you get, you know, you've seen on some of these other ones, too, you get a lot of kind of animosity created when a new neighborhood comes along and then dumps through an old one, those kind of things. So, you know, these two, good, bad, or indifferent, are, you know, Cedar View will have its own access points, and then the Seasons here will have its own access points, and that's the way it'll stay on a master-plan level.
Great. Thank you for that clarification.
Yep. I'm really glad they focused on traffic this time and not apartments. Because no matter what the builder wants to do, they're going to have apartments. They're going to have so many... What was the minimum out of a drawing?
The difference was 165 and 194?
165. So, they're going to have a subdivision there, whether it's one size or the other size. So, they're going to have traffic there. But I know just on Hillcrest, just with the opening of Woodgate, has really increased the traffic there just itself. So, building this in and all those short roads is just going to make it hell to pull out there, is what I'm looking at. Now, if the traffic study shows that these roads are going to have a great impact, who is financially responsible to fix these intersections till they're not really bad, horrible?
Yeah. So, the recourse, or, yeah, I mean, it's 10 layers to that, answering that question. So, I'll try and give you a generic answer here. But so, if a traffic study comes in and those queues are unacceptable, so the delay is in efficiency, those intersections is, you know, not to a standard, generally, the answer is, you can't develop until that's resolved. A lot of times, you're not just going to... You're not going to add another roundabout, you know, they're a million and a half dollars, 200, or, you know, 200 feet down the road from the existing roundabout. You know, roundabouts are for intersections of the minor arterials. And in this case, there's options. So, you know, if someone goes north-south, there's lower volume on Miami, you hang a right, and you can get in a roundabout and go, you know, wherever you need to. That roundabout, when we design these things, we design them for, you know, 25-plus years out, volume-wise. We project into the future, don't size them, we make sure that they will operate into the future with these additional traffic loads, both overall system growth, and then we do account for the density being added from nearby intersections when we design those. So, typically, you won't see a capacity issue on those projects, on those like the Sunnyside or Miami-Hillcrest roundabouts for easily 25-some years. And the other way to stay ahead of those is, again, giving alternate routes to Hillcrest to all the traffic. You know, we're... This project would add more traffic to Hillcrest, but the base level of traffic on Hillcrest, in theory, is lowering with the other projects that the city's doing up at 6700. So, sometimes they have to wait out some, you know, master plan improvements that the city's working on. Sometimes if there's, you know, like turn lanes and stuff that are warranted, typically, that'll always fall on the development because that's their frontage, but, you know...
That was my question.
Yeah. And we're not going to, you know, we're not going to ask a...
In Pennsylvania, yeah.
A single apartment development to do a $5 million, 6700 extension for us. You know, that's a city, that's a city problem, and that benefits, you know, the entire community. So, usually, when they're doing improvements, they're focused on their frontage improvements, and that's typically turn lane triggers. And a product like this, that would be, which just already has the right turn lane on the one side, but if additional warranted, they couldn't do their product without it.
So, if we stick with the R3A or even, and then increase it, you're going to have traffic no matter which way?
Yeah. What you're saying is, yeah, the existing zoning would allow up to the 160 units, you know, whether that'd be the difference between a trigger of an additional right turn lane or not, you know, off of Miami, probably not. You know, if they're in that neighborhood, they're probably going to be in that neighborhood either way. And again, if those are triggered, those requirements would fall onto the development for the frontage.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Chad?
Open space. Jace, does the open space requirement change with the zoning change?
No. No. So, that'll all come out with whatever subdivision or site development comes in, but there's no difference between the two, should the rezone go through.
And on the same subject, same way with sidewalks, zoning changes, that change any sidewalk requirements, lower or more intense?
Sorry to cut you off there. No. No. That would remain the same as well. So, yeah, connectivity, all those points would remain essentially with the new zone district, too.
Jace, what about parking, since the B4 is technically a commercial zone? Like, how's that changed, or does it? Because the subdivision process is what it is.
Great question. Parking comes down to use, so it is all dependent on the use. For instance, multifamily requires one and a half spaces per unit for office uses. That requires, you know, one space per 300 square feet of office space. So, it's all dependent on the use. It's not necessarily dependent on the zone.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
We should talk to twins, then?
Yeah. Or if you have more questions?
I don't have any more questions.
Okay.
Yeah, Amanda, do we still have you on Zoom?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, we've got a question for you from Steve.
Okay.
This can be addressed to Amanda or the Delmont folks in the room. So, just looking at the, the letter that you guys attached to the application, and it says in there that, and you told us that there wasn't a site plan, but it says in here that, that there is a plan for, to build out 192 units, and then it says that market conditions and construction costs require the higher density to make the project financially viable. So I'm just wondering, is that, that's something that, should I interpret that as stating there that whatever plan you've had, you've, you've looked at some numbers, and if you, if, if you're not building out the 192, you're not building any apartments? Is that how I should interpret that?
Um, I think that you would, might interpret it as, well, that's a good question, and I apologize, I don't run the numbers. I'm, I'm more focused on entitlement process, so I apologize if I can't answer the question tonight, but, you know, we do, we have done some kind of back-of-the-envelope studies on what we could do at this property if it were R4. And so ideally, we would like to take it to the 192 units, granted that the various studies that we do would allow that. And so, yeah, ideally, we would go to that point, but if, I think if changes are needed, then we, we could go down a little bit. But, yeah, I apologize, it's just a little bit too early for me to give you any specifics at this point in time.
Okay, thanks.
Chad, did you have?
I do have another question, yes. Now that Amanda, she's spurred a, another question that I was thinking about. So Scott, Amanda, when she first spoke, talked about that currently the city does not own, I don't remember which word it was, I think it was the state, Pennsylvania, thank you. Tell me more, is that good for the city, that we want, either A, we want the official dedicated access, or B, we don't, or we do want the expense associated with, with the issue? Along with what does this have to do with zoning, would, would that really, I assume we would have that access and be settled when we're doing our site development, and so really that whole question goes out the window, because it would all get addressed during the site plans anyway. So does it really matter that we own it or we don't?
For purposes of the zoning hearing, it's somewhat irrelevant. The, there's a whole, there's a really long history in the seasons, even up to the state Supreme Court, over land and survey and sheriff's deeds and all of these things. So I won't get into the nitty-gritty of that. Generally speaking, though, you know, when, anytime a subdivision comes in, it's a chance to clean up past sins or skeletons of things that may have been an issue for whatever reason, always lots of reasons. So, you know, as developments come in, it's done to a modern standard, a lot, it is a good chance to clean up a lot of that stuff and get it, you know, like in this case, they'll be doing a plat that kind of sets a record straight and has a clean slate to work off of, because it has hindered this area. So, I mean, I don't know if you were here at the time, but when all those townhomes were built, along Stanford's, the north-south road, they sat vacant for a long time, because it was tied up in a line of speed over a one-foot strip between two different surveys, stuff like that. So generally speaking, any rights-of-way that are constructed with development do end up dedicated to the city. That's just how municipalities work. So, you know, we're happy to take on ma, the main roads, we end up taking on the maintenance. If there's portions that weren't, and they need to be cleaned up, the plating is a great chance to do that.
Great. Thank you for explaining that. For the most part, it really doesn't have to do, that much to do with our zoning change tonight.
Correct, yeah, it's a future thing to clean up, yep.
I have a question for Amanda.
Yes.
When I'm reading this, it sounds like you want to go to R4 to build on, but if we vote against that and we stay at R3A, would you still build, or would that just throw everything out, out the window?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a really big question mark, and it's a question to the, to the owner, and like I said, I don't know the particular numbers and the, you know, economics specifically, so I apologize that I can't answer that. But, you know, ideally, yeah, R4 is, is really our, our preference here, and I understand, and I've taken down everyone's concerns, and there are certainly things that we will definitely consider, and as we hopefully move on to the next phase in our site development permit, so we can be mindful of our neighbors, so. Sorry, I can't, sorry, I can't speak specifically to that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Guys got any other questions, or, no? All right, any discussion? I, I would just say that basically what we're talking about is 30, 30 units, because they can do 165 as it, as it is, without coming before us, and don't even, don't even have to have this meeting.
That's a lot of units.
It is a lot of units.
And that's a lot of people, and that's a lot of cars.
But that's, but that's, the crux of this is, that's what it is, is the 30, it's 30 units.
At the end of the day, that's where we're at.
The way it's zoned now?
Yeah, so it's 30-unit difference between, if we, if, if we grant the zoning change to R4...
The density goes from 1915 to 19, yeah. That's a lot.
Yeah, and the impact of those 30 units on...
Make yourself ready for our conversation.
Yeah, the impact of those, if, if there is a material impact on those 30 units on the code, whether that be in its description of the welfare of the community, which is what we're hearing tonight, or...
Safety, welfare.
Or, or in other aspects of welfare of the community, the benefit of state of housing.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it looks like not much, like 30 units, but that's a lot. That's a lot of kids, that's a lot of cars. I mean, what if they both drove big trucks, Chad, and parked everywhere, you know? Everybody had a big truck, that's a huge impact. And I think out of... No trucks? Oh, yeah, well, that's a whole nother meeting. We had 15 people talk today, and they, I think all of them realized that something's going to happen, but the only, the only way we can, I don't know, I just think that's, we just approved that one subdivision that's adjacent to it, so that's a lot. There are a lot that we've approved that are going up the street of Miami. That's a lot. So, yeah, to put this here, and we're talking 30 units, this is, you missed that meeting, but we're having the same conversation, I, and you know how I feel. I guess I want you to tell me why, why? Why have 30 more? Why? I mean, what, why? Just to say we did, or, I mean, tell me what you think, you guys?
Seems like economics.
Well, okay.
I guess I'm feeling a little more tonight, a little more sense of the, the density. It feels like, it feels high, to me, I'm just expressing myself as a, from what I've heard, tonight as opposed to the last time. I know we're supposed to take tonight in its entirety, but I'm just, I'm feeling that safety issue tonight.
As we have seen this kind of issue before, this is a zoning hearing, it's not a sketch plan, it's not a plat approval, it's a zoning hearing. It addresses the owner's rights to develop the property, keeping in mind, it has to meet certain criteria. The staff look at that criteria. Their recommendation is to approve R4, but that does not mean 17, 3, 30-story apartments or anything else. That means the owner has the flexibility to develop that land to the extent of what they consider the market will bear their costs and what it does to the community. Granted, this neighborhood is changing. How it changes is something we have to consider, but that's considered at the sketch plan and the plat review. You don't know what's going in there, other than a vague idea of around 192 units. However, we just heard pending considerations, from what they've heard from the public and negotiations with the staff, that number can come down, may come down. The area where we have some ability to address your concerns is at the sketch plan and at the plat review, not at the zoning hearing. This is about the zoning of the property. As it stands now, people are interested in building, something's going to be built there. I'm sure you've all lived in places where you had this beautiful open space behind your house, and two years later, there were 27 townhomes. There went the mountain view. Those, those things occur. What we can do in the sketch plan and in the plat review is try to get the developer to ameliorate the concerns that you have, and that, that is the appropriate place to address those concerns. And in addition, based on what you've been saying about Miami and Hillcrest, I think there might be some recommendation made to the police department about traffic enforcement. I've driven both those roads, not at peak periods, but yes, there's more traffic, but we can deal with that. I think what Scott mentioned, the 6700 extension will help that a lot. So for the purposes of this hearing, I'm inclined to go with the staff recommendation.
Thanks, Richard. Phoebe? Oh, I can, I can feel, yeah, yeah, go. Release the house.
Richard, what you're saying is correct, but zoning is zoning, and they can put what they want. They could turn around and sell, the owner could sell this land, and somebody, if, that they look at it and it's zoned R4, and you can put X amount of units on it, you can put X amount of units on it. I mean, even though the sketch plan, we may, we may not be on this board, and I'm sure you guys probably don't want us on this board by the time that comes. You're right, we have an impact at that point, but tonight we do have the ability to monitor future density by not, okay, in this rezone. And everything you said is correct to a point, but zoning is zoning, and we've seen where that's a really good thing, and then sometimes you wish you could go back and, and change something you'd done, or, so, I mean, I, I get what you're saying, but you have to look at a big picture here. And if we change the zoning, then the zoning is changed, and the, the density is changed.
Well, I think, I think I was just going to, I think Phoebe kind of beat you to the point, but saying that, I mean, saying that, and we can go and maybe ask staff if we want to, if we need to, to go into more detail about what our will say is after this point, if we did, you know, say approve the R4 zoning, what, you know, what actually happens at the site review and sketch plan, and what at that point is just, say, meeting setbacks and technical requirements. But I, what Phoebe said, I think is true, is that, you know, say, some aspects, some aspects of the traffic issues would be covered later at those points, but the density is only covered now, right? Like, that doesn't come up again, right? If those, the, the difference in density between R3A and R4, that doesn't come up at any stage in the process after this. This is the time to deal with that issue, and that's what we're talking about. So, yeah. And I'll just add too, that the applicant's right, you know, the applicant certainly does have a, have a use-by right now, right now, build on that, build on that lot as it's zoned, and so that's also, I don't think, exactly what we're talking about. They do have a right to zone, to build on that property as a use-by right, they can start that process tomorrow. You know, they are asking for a rezone to build something else, and they, you know, that's, that's really what's more an issue, is the rezone, not their right to build on the property as it's zoned.
Chad?
So 160 units, the part that's the use-by right, no matter what, when you build 160 units, it's going to change the appearance of the neighborhood, it's going to change the feeling of the neighborhood, and that's going to happen, again, as a use-by right. We, as a country, firmly believe in land rights, rights of the owner of that property. And so no matter what, this neighborhood is going to change from vacant property, that does feel very open, and feels very slow and quiet, to a busy, busy environment. And that's going to happen whether we make any change or not. So we still are talking about this impact of 30 units. Last meeting, I was comfortable, we were talking about 38 units, and I was comfortable with those 38 units, because I still feel like there is a ton of infrastructure around here. Scott and the crew associated with, with the, the building, the planning department has built that roundabout right there that handles a lot of cars, and there's capacity. And it just makes sense, where, where there is capacity, we build units versus other places there might not be as much capacity, it might be, there might not be as many, as much infrastructure and amenities, and so maybe it's not the right place for zoning changes at other places, at other locations. But here, we, again, this is infill, as Jace has talked about, and it makes sense to put that there. You know, I'll admit, my biggest loss on this whole project is the commercial space. I love the commercial space being spread out. There was a, about two months ago, we were dealing with some commercial space on Ogden, and all of the people were fighting, saying, "No, don't you dare bring that commercial space." So this is, just feels very odd, that, that, you know, just change of perspective of, of the neighborhood. But I, I am sad to lose that commercial space, but I, I see the, the value of the housing as being a benefit. And again, just like I talked about with Matt Miles neighborhood, we need a spectrum of different options for different housing purposes, and so I am very supportive of this, this change, because to me, still, 30 units does not feel like a dramatic change compared to the 160 that is, that is already going to take place.
Yeah, I mean, Chad, I agree with you, and I, I think, the, the, losing the B4 obviously indicates an intention to not do any commercial space there, which is too bad, because the comprehensive plan actually does identify that, and it's one of the only vacant pieces of land within town that is actually still identified as a city, more community center, and so to lose that is unfortunate. But at the same time, I think I agree with you with the, we're talking about 30 units, it is a lot, as Phoebe mentioned, but not compared to the potential to, if, if they're going to build, if they have the capacity to build 164 units, the extra 30, the change is already happening, or going to happen. And again, for housing, we, we do hear it a lot, and we, we take it to heart, it doesn't mean we don't listen. Nobody wants development in their backyard, we understand that. But legitimately, this is one of the last vacant parcels near downtown, it's not even that close to downtown, but near downtown to where an apartment-type of situation could, could end up and still be somewhat useful to the community. Putting apartments way far south of town doesn't make any sense, or really far north of town. And so this is, you know, the opportunity, as far as forward-thinking, the opportunity to at least take this land and make it more useful to, to the city. I would also clarify that, you know, even what the developers said, the economy's changing at such a rate that, yeah, they're talking about 194 units, but that could all change tomorrow, and then townhomes could be the thing that they could make more money at, so then that's what they'll develop. Obviously, we're giving them the ability, or any other future owner, to, to potentially, you know, hit the maximum density through multifamily housing, but it doesn't necessarily mean that that is a tried-and-gone conclusion, and that's what's going to happen tomorrow. And the biggest issue, I see nothing in the application that is against, that goes against the city code, and I'm, you know, I, I think I'm in favor of probably seeing it rezoned. Phoebe?
I'm not...
Nothing else? Okay?
Yeah, I'll just add, and I guess I don't know, David, how close you look to the minutes by its time, and if it's a new hearing, I guess we should state again, at least what I think the consideration for voting against it is, and where you said that it doesn't, a point of the, not the city technical code, but of, via, of the legal code, where we make our decisions, and that's in the, it says the welfare of the community, and I think we had a group of people tonight, and we talked last week about, that doesn't mean that's decisive, but to me, that, that's certainly folks that are saying in very concrete ways about, you know, folks being an elderly community and folks walking back there, and so if you have additional 30 units, we did this last time, additional 60 cars on Stanford, and a lot of those, because of the particular way in which this traffic concerns bear on that area, you're saying, and let's say they are work trucks, so you've got 60 more work trucks going down there, and people trying to walk. Again, that's, doesn't mean that's decisive, but to me, that certainly is a case in which there is evidence, and which it impacts the welfare of the community. there is evidence and which it impacts the welfare of the community, and that is one of the conditions for, you know, for being approved or not.
Hundred percent. You guys, anything else to discuss?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead, Ronald.
This issue has just really kind of torn, torn me on this one, the traffic versus that. And I keep thinking, well, the extra 30 isn't going to make that big of a difference. But if they stick with the R3A, I believe that we will have the same arguments from the audiences we have heard today with R3A. Once they see it, there's too much traffic, there's going to be too much this, and there's going to be too much that.
You're saying further on in the development cycle?
Yes, further on at that. So I believe we're going to have the same arguments when they show the plans, if we ever see plans. You know, with the way the economy is, who knows? You know, they could sell it, they might not do it, so I have to, I would have to stick with going to the high-density on this one because I don't think, at this point, that that will make that big of a difference. I still think the same issues that we have today, we are going to have, whether it's R3A or whether it's R4, we're going to have the same issues, and we're going to have to address them no matter, no matter which way we go.
All right, well, I think it sounds to me like there's, everybody's kind of voiced their opinion, and I think I would entertain a motion if there is one to be made.
There's not an denial, is there? I mean, did you see that? It's not even written.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion. I hereby make a motion to recommend approval of the rezone request, of the season's rezone to R4 High Density District. The request meets the code criteria based upon the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing and in the staff reports.
All right, do I have a second? Ronald, hold on one second, guys, sorry, just writing down who did what. All right, any discussion necessary on the motion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Well, nay, but aye.
Okay. So, one, two? One, two, three, four, four ayes and three nays.
The nays?
Ronald, Richard, David, and Chad voted in favor. Phoebe, Jan, and Steve voted against. So the motion passes four to three. We'll hold off for a minute, guys, for the next agenda item and let those people leave that need to leave.
After the meeting, I wouldn't bring up the issue that the, the motion on there, it's not okay.
Yeah.
They should. It's something we need.
All right, staff, you guys ready for agenda item three?
Staff is ready.
Let's do it.
We'll jump in here. Good evening again, Planning Commission. Just for the record again, Jace Hawke-Walt, I'm a, let me share my screen. There we go. Sorry about that. So again, Jace Hawke-Walt, Planning Manager here at the City Montrose. The item I have in front of you this time around is a sketch plan request for the subdivision of 44.64 acres. General location is in southeast Montrose. This project is known as the Grove subdivision, and the applicant is Chris, I believe it's Coke, Cook, sorry. The subject property, as you can see here, is just outlined in red there on the screen. So here, just for some project backgrounds, as I mentioned, the total site size is 44.64 acres. The zoning of the property is currently R2, which refers to low-density residential. That's shown here in the illustration. So R2 is intended to provide a quiet, low-density development for single-family residences. As proposed, the developments will contain 129 single-family lots. It will also retain 21.35 acres as open space as currently proposed. So this is the subdivision process laid out. I know William Reese here went over this a bit in his earlier presentation, but I guess just for maybe some of the folks in the crowd or folks online, step one of the subdivision process is referred to as the sketch plan. This is just a conceptual design of the proposal. This is the step we're currently at with this application right now. So in this, staff and outside agencies review the sketch plan and confirm that standards are being met, and then we bring it to Planning Commission, as it is in front of you tonight. No action is made or taken, and no vote is made, but the step allows Planning Commission to provide feedback to the applicant on the proposal, as well as the neighborhood and others. So following the sketch plan, the project goes to preliminary plat in that phase of it. This phase, as I kind of indicated in the last presentation, is really where staff goes more in-depth on the civil plans and the actual infrastructure design. So we get the application, we will send it out to review to a number of different agencies, have a lot of back and forth with the applicant developer, and essentially make sure that it is good to go and meets all codes and standards. Once it has, we will bring it in front of Planning Commission, and then it'll go in front of council. And then lastly, after that, they can actually start construction, assuming there's approval, and it would go into the final plat phase, which is generally a quicker review that just goes to council, and then after that, it can be formally subdivided, and then building permits can be obtained and constructed on. This is the comprehensive plan, future land use map, a map you're probably very familiar with at this point as well. I didn't zoom in here, but you can see that the property in question for the proposal tonight is listed as residential mixed density low. The intent of this is to provide primarily for single-family homes, as well as a small amount of attached residential dwelling units. The proposal certainly conforms to the intent of this future land use designation as proposed. So this is, this slide just refers to some of the comp plan and municipal code, essentially information that we look at. Just as additional info, the future land use map I just showed illustrates general and somewhat flexible location and extends for various land uses and densities. Additionally, the municipal code and zoning regulations specify land uses and densities, bulk and height requirements, setbacks, and a number of other development standards allowed within each zone district. I'll go over these a little bit in the next slide. Development needs to conform with these standards, though. That's something to certainly keep in mind, and it also needs to be in conformance with the comprehensive plan. So getting into zoning regulations a little bit more, per section 4-4-6 subsection A of the municipal code, the R2 Zone District is intended to provide quiet, low-density development for single-family residences. Furthermore, the current zoning is compatible with adjacent properties. In that previous zoning map I showed, you'll see R1, which refers to very-low density, which lies directly to the north, while R2 zoning lies adjacent to the east and the south. And then there's also some R3 designated property to the west. Getting into zoning regulations and kind of the bulk standards a little bit more, these are the dimensional standards, and I'm not going to go into the nitty-gritty details of this. One thing I'll mention is, as I indicated, the proposals for 129 residential lots, so I did the quick math here based on the site size and per the density allowed in that 7,500 square-foot minimum size threshold, in theory, the sites could accommodate up to 259 lots. So again, they're proposing 129, maximum density would allow for 259. Those are, and then all the other dimensional standards, they'll of course need to be met as well. Here's just a quick glimpse of the sketch plan, this is also in the packet, but what this shows is that the developments will essentially be broken up into three phases. Phase one's going to be 53 lots, they're kind of shaded in pink on the left side, that's the north portion of the property. Phase two is going to be 25 lots, more or less in the middle, and then phase three is the 51 lots, kind of in the darker purple. On the right-hand side, that's what would be the southern portion of the property. So, and I misspoke earlier on open space, so I, as proposed, it provides 129 residential lots and a total of 9.53 acres of open space, so my apologies there. What that refers to is 21% of the total property area. Got my numbers mixed up a little bit, so my apologies. And then just to conclude, the review and discussion of the sketch plan is informal and non-binding, and serves to provide guidance to the developer in accordance with the municipal code. No actions taken with this item, as I previously mentioned. So essentially, staff recommends that Planning Commission share any feedback with the applicants, who may consider and incorporate that feedback in the design when applying for a future preliminary plat moving forward. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions. I do believe we have the applicant team here as well that has a brief presentation.
Thanks, Jace. The applicant want to come forward, present?
Chris Cook, and 2049 Brookway, Montrose, Colorado. So, I was born here, I was raised here, I wasn't necessarily born here, that's kind of subjective, but born on the Western Slope, raised in Montrose, spent a lot of time here, and really excited to be back. You know, we've been back for a year and a half, and really excited to bring the Grove to Montrose. I think it's a well-needed community. I sent Jace a slide, kind of a slide deck, kind of give some more formal information for, you know, potentially the neighborhood or the neighbors that are going to be around. You know, people want to know what's going to be built, like I heard from, you know, the previous people, they'd really like to know what's going to happen up front. So we've gone ahead, and we've decided to do that. So we have a master plan community. It's going to be five home designs that can be intermingled, tweaked back and forth. 129 lots, ranging from 7,500 square feet all the way up to 25,000 square feet in lot size. We're trying to stick with inside the theme, live here, play everywhere. It's kind of why we all moved back, right? Ski, hunt, fish, do whatever we do here. We came back for this purpose, and, you know, I'd sure like to share this place with the rest of the people that come, or the people that are here. So however we go about it, we can continue on. We do have this actually broken down into two phases. We have phase one, which is 54 lots, phase two, which is 75 lots. We have some pretty intricacies here. We have 1,400 square-foot houses ranging, this one says 2,200, but it's going to, those houses can go up to 3,300 square feet, which is kind of the max that we're designing. And those can kind of change and ever-flow, and as we get further on to past sketch and into preliminary plat, you guys will probably see some more information about that. Like I said, the lot size, 7,500 to 25,000. We can move to the next slide. This just kind of shows an overlay of how this is going to work out with the open space, walkways, dedicated walkways, easements. This place is called the Grove for a reason, we're going to have trees lining the fairway, we want to keep it secluded, we want to keep it nice, and we want to, we don't want to break somebody's budget by having them move into the Grove. However, we want it to be a nice, quiet, comfortable place for people to reside. This just kind of gives the intent of how we have at the end of the cul-de-sacs, access to the walkways, access to the park, to the playground that we're planning to put in, and so on and so forth. We can continue on. Design intent, this gives you guys a good idea of the design intent or the future look of the homes. Patio ideas change, the color scheme. Basically, everything's going to be handcrafted, the finishes are going to be selected, they're going to be procured through the developer, which is us. And we can continue on, just kind of give you a brief overlay. We have a community park there. The design style is super important, then we have a lot of porch elements that we're going to use to segregate, so that people have privacy, but this is in a community that's going to have six-foot-high fencing everywhere. So we're going to do the privacy more through the porch design and some of those other things that we do. And ladies and gentlemen, that's the Grove. If we have to get into more nuts and bolts or more details, we do have a video that was sent over to Jace that he can play pending, you know, anybody needs more details as to what this place is actually going to look like, we have a 3D rendering and a full fly-through if you guys want Jace to see that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris. Hold, Chris, wait, 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 wait one second, bud. First, Jace, do you have that video, or do you guys, I mean, part, because this is basically just recommendations and stuff, it might be good to see it if there's 3D rendering and stuff, yes? Yeah?
I think it's good.
Guys? Okay.
It's about four minutes long.
If you can play it, then, yeah.
Give me just a second, I'll get queued up here.
Yeah.
From Ogden, Ogden, follow, here it is, 6725.
I don't see the other side of it. It's like, it doesn't cut through.
You need some music for those.
Wait.
Yes. We had some voice-overs, it was a whole thing, and I had to remove it.
See, I'm supposed to be talking, they have a little note there for me.
And I'll apologize slightly for the lag here, and just, my computer looks as smooth as can be.
Don't judge me on Jace's computer. Don't judge me on Jase's computer.
All right, and that is it.
That's it.
All right. Chris, thanks for the presentation. Stay up here for a second, 'cause I think we got some questions for you. Go ahead. Jan, somebody, one of you, go.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
'Cause I know we're in the suggestion phase.
Yeah, go for it.
Water? All the green you've got? Are you looking at zero escaping? Or is that, maybe that's a recommendation we can make, is that's a concern. I know we have, we've had previous questions about that in the past, when there's been these big, beautiful lots that are within city limits, and whole area of, whole issue of water.
Yeah, understand. Currently, we have water shares for the property, so nobody's gonna be on irrigation water. The only irrigation water is gonna be used for the open space.
Zero escaping will be up to the individual owner?
We will have options for zero escaping. They can choose to do that if they want, but we'll have landscaping design in zero scape and not in zero scape.
Is this an HOA, of course?
There will be an HOA, yes.
Here we go. The green areas and the open space areas and your park, that's not gonna be city-owned and up to the city to take care of that.
No.
The HOA would take care of all the upkeep, all the green areas, all the open space. It will not be a city responsibility.
Correct.
Okay.
Chris, you guys oughta add some pickleball courts. That's a big draw.
I was thinking about that, but I feel like we need some indoor pickleball courts.
Yeah.
So that'll be next.
Yep.
Steve?
No.
Chris, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, cheers. All right, what are we doing? Public comment. All right, so we'll open up the public comment. Hopefully, don't have to read my spiel again. You guys were all here earlier, but limited to three minutes, if there is anybody out there that would like to come, tell us what you think, what you like, what you don't like. Basically, this session or this hearing for this agenda item is basically just giving feedback to the developer that they can go back with and either adopt changes or not before they come back before the planning commission with a more concrete plan. So, now's your chance. If you guys have any concerns or questions that you would like to voice. No? Yep, sir?
Mark Fish, thirty-three forty-eight Ivory Court, Brown Ranch. And I just have one concern that I would like to voice, and that would be the entrance on the north edge of the property now proposed to include a considerable length of Otter Road improvement, and I'm wondering whether or not that could possibly be changed to make it a four-way intersection, which is now a three-way intersection where Mahogany goes into Brown Ranch, whether they could possibly put their entrance to their subdivision, to the north entrance of the new proposed subdivision at that Mahogany intersection. Is, if that's, again, a doable thing. The beautiful thing about that would be far less Otter Road improvement for that developer. The other thing that I'm concerned about is, again, the height, the maximum height of the proposed dwellings. And, of course, I thought I heard him say fourteen hundred square foot was the minimum square footage required. I would, needless to say, I don't know if that falls within the zoning requirements for our two, is it? But other than that, we'd love to see it in, and we'd love to have the city take a serious look at cleaning up this wonderful open space that they're calling open space right now, which is one of the most unsightly junkyards in the entire city. Thank you so much.
Cheers, Mark. Thank you. Actually, Jase, could you pull back up the presentation and just have the site plan or the drawing up there, just so we can reference that? Thank you. Is there anybody else out there? Might you comment?
My name's Kyle Oldroyd. I live at thirty-three forty Ivory Court. It looks like a beautiful development. My questions and concerns, if I can remember them, are if you look at the north end of the area, I don't see any green space in the new development. All the green space currently appears to be Brown Ranch's green space. And I just think a community with green space surrounding the properties appears to be nicer and safer. There is, I'm trying to think of an appropriate way of saying it, but there's some untoward sort of traffic that we see people parked along the road, just sitting there, doing heaven knows what. I think some green space between the homes and the roads. We get a lot of parking on Otter, Otter Road, going east. People just sitting there, doing heaven knows what. So that's a concern. In addition, height of houses is a concern. And then also, this is less for the development, but more for the city. That road, and I don't know if, when they do traffic studies, if cyclists are involved in that. This sixty-seven twenty-five, is that the road, is a huge cycling, many, many cyclists are out there. And I think before this moves forward, we're gonna have people hurt and potentially in fatal accidents on bicycles because of the increased traffic. So, just some of those big concerns for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. Is there anyone else? Going once, going twice. Oh, there we go.
My name is John Moyer. I live at two seventy-eight North Mesa Street, Fruit of Colorado. I'm the, kinda the developer representative of Brown Ranch, which is the property that surrounds this property. I just wanted, you know, I showed up tonight because I wanted to see the sketch plan and see how it would affect us. There's some work that we're gonna have to do with that developer right now. Otter Road isn't developed out there. Otter Road, the alignment that they show currently is on, is owned by the Brown Ranch developer. It's not a dedicated road at this point in time, and the city's aware of it, and I'm sure the developers are aware of it. We both use the same engineer, Delmont Consultants, so I'm sure that's something that will work out over time. I don't disagree with a comment that was made earlier about maybe bringing the intersection down onto Mahogany. It might make more sense, but I think the city's gonna have some concerns with regard to the spacing between that intersection and the intersection on sixty-seven twenty-five road. So maybe that's why they came up with that alignment. And then, as well, there's a question of how sewer is gonna get tied into the sewer that's currently at Brown Ranch. We're gonna have to work out an easement. So I just wanted you all to be aware of some of the considerations as this project moves forward, that we're gonna have to address with the city and the developer. So, other than that, I think it's a nice community. I think they've done a good job on the planning of it, and I think they addressed many of the issues. I agree it would be nice to have some open space along sixty-seven twenty-five road, because that is a busy road. We do provide, you can see to the north, that Brown Ranch provides substantial open space to the north of it. So, I don't know how critical it would be there, but just my comments. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John. Appreciate it. Anyone else? No? Nope?
I'm Brittany Oldroyd. I reside at thirty-three forty Ivory Court. And I just, this is actually less for the developer, but more for the council as you're doing all the planning things. My concern, I had my husband brought up, which was the cyclist, 'cause currently, pretty much if a cyclist is there, you're on the opposite side of traffic trying to get around. And there is a bit of an incline there where you may not be able to see. So I don't know what, 'cause I know that in the city maps, it appears that is a bike route, considered a bike route, that they kind of steer people towards. And right now, it just, with the added, all of these houses, I get concerned somebody's gonna get hurt. The other thing is, right at, as you head north of actually Brown Ranch, with all this extra traffic, there is a planned elementary school on the north end of Brown Ranch. And that curve, I don't know in terms of city planning, but there is that sharp curve that every year, there's a couple people that go off into the ditch. So, those are just safety concerns that I have that are less for the developer, but some considerations with adding more people down in that area. Thanks.
Thanks, Brittany. Anyone else? No? You guys? No? Okay. All right. All right, we'll close the public comment portion for this agenda item and bring it back to the planning commission. And now's when I get to have Scott say for the record that with development comes some of these improvements to roads and things and stuff. So, it's a good thing, right, that we're looking forward to.
Yeah, and this one's especially challenging. So, you know, to get true bike connectivity to Brown Ranch, you know, that exists, Brown Ranch is a lot, you know, large area. Eventually, when it builds out, you know, it's gonna be thousands of homes, or not thousands, in that area, but large, large development, including this one. So the challenge remains for this whole quadrant. We're kind of an appendage of the town, not too different than like Cobble Creek, you're kinda out there, isolated from the town. And a lot of those issues came up with Chappita as well. You know, what fixes the bike issues out here is the widening of Ogden, the widening of sixty-seven twenty-five to include bike lanes. You know, there's twenty-plus properties that need to be acquired to do that. You're into the, you know, fifteen-plus million by the time you get there. So, it remains a priority for us. Unfortunately, it's a challenging priority until, you know, development continues to come to this area, to where we start getting the right-of-way acquired. The cooperation to acquire the right-of-way, a lot of places, you know, they're not willing to sell to solve that. So, unfortunately, that remains a problem and will, you know, as continued development occurs in this portion of town. And there is no silver bullet immediately, but you know, development does occur, or does help, kinda steer towards that, help prioritize that, to where you get the critical mass, to where you can start justifying, you know, doing those larger multi-year capital projects to get those improvements made. So, I share in the concern.
Scott, is there any, is there any reason from the city's perspective that those two entryways or to the property don't align? Like, you don't want them that far or that close to the intersection of Ogden and?
We didn't dictate that to them. They came back with this proposal. You know, generally, we look at separation, make sure whatever they propose and they're desired on their side works from a code and a safety standpoint. What they're proposing does work. You get, and it's kind of probably preferred from the city's standpoint. Generally, especially, so, you know, Otter Road will continue to the east, and Otter Road will connect to the west, down to Woodgate and Townsend eventually. So, you know, imagine those kind of volumes and that, you know, density of traffic on that intersection, you know, fifty years out is probably realistically before that would connect. But when you have intersections in close proximity to each other, especially at two minor arterials, having, when they're that close, someone can be turning. If there's queues, that could slow down the efficiency of the intersection, and they could back up onto the main thoroughfare. So that's the concern with close intersections. What they do is forecast the traffic out into the future and make, and model that to see what those typical queues are and if those interferences are there. It's probably marginal at this. I mean, the existing Mahogany is close, but not too close. We have worse intersections. Think of like Denny's right there in front of Townsend, where you have five feet. Not really, but. So, you know, the further up is preferred generally, but we're open to it if they did wanna do one further down. The challenge that John mentioned is, you know, that the entrance sign to Brown Ranch and that property between the two, in order to get access to Mahogany for a road and for the sewer as well, that's currently HOA property. So that's something, that's detail they'd have to work out with the land, the homeowners' association there. And then, you know, as John mentioned, the pink extension of Otter is currently Brown Ranch property that, 'cause it was part of an outlot, it's been planned to extend as Otter Road, but they just haven't gotten there yet with their development. And so, it hasn't been dedicated as a street, 'cause it hasn't been built as a street. Obviously, the space is reserved for that. So that's, like John mentioned, another detail that may drive what they can do with their access points and locations of that. And generally speaking, you know, when a subdivision comes in, the code asks that they do improve the road along their frontage, with the theory being, you know, we don't want to cut Brown Ranch short. When they come in, they then have to get past all the other subdivisions just to get to theirs. So from an equity standpoint, generally, as subdivisions come, each one's kinda doing their improvements if they're, if those extensions are needed. In theory, you know, working their way out from the core of the city.
Thanks, Scott. Is there anything else for staff? No? No? Oh, go ahead.
One, I think you answered that. But where I came from, the road from one end of the development to the other end was the builder's responsibility. And I believe that's just what you just said. So if they wanna redo all these intersections and do everything, that could actually be on them and not on us.
Yeah, generally, this, if it's just serving that development, generally, the city wouldn't, unless there's some economic incentive for affordable housing or something that we can justify. A lot of times, the city won't participate financially. The starting point in the code is, you know, the, all the improvements required are on the developer to start with. Sometimes the city does play along, again, in the name of economic development, or if there's, you know, a strong need to get an arterial connected, sometimes we would pay the incremental cost between a local street and an arterial street, because that arterial will serve more than one neighborhood. Those kind of things. And those are all things that get kinda negotiated at the city council level with the developer.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, guys? No? Chris, are you still, still here? You wanna come back up real quick? I just have a question for you. Just again, state your name and address for the record, please.
Chris Cook, two zero four nine Brookway.
So, what is the, I don't think the flyby really showed it. In fact, I think it showed it, made it look like a park. What's the, what is your plan currently around the, what? It's a junkyard. Like, what is your, what is your plan on the development side?
Well, if they'll sell it to me.
Well, yeah, so are you, are you working to?
We'd add a couple more. Currently, our plan is to mitigate it as much as humanly possible for our development through trees, nature, and aesthetics that, you know, in our reality, it'll probably block off, our trees will end up probably blocking that junkyard off from Brown's Ranch. So, it'll be an improvement for the people that face south on Brown's Ranch, the ones that are up on the hill looking down. I mean, it'll be, it'll be a nice improvement for them. So currently, our plans are to, you know, it's the Grove, so we're gonna treat the thing up.
If you are able to get that and include it in your design, would it stay as open space, or would you be putting more homes in there?
A substantial amount of that would stay as open space, just through the dedications of a couple drainages that I have. Kinda looking at that plan. I know that not the junkyard, I'm, I've talked to that lady that owns that, and I don't assume that she's interested in selling her parcel off to me. So, the junkyard's kind of a whole different ballgame, if that's what we're technically calling it. if that's what we're technically calling it. So, a lot of it would be, we would maintain the same ratio of open space. I guess is probably the best way to say it. If we were to add 49, you know, more houses, we would make sure that we still had another 22% of open space. It's kind of our niche.
Okay. You guys got anything else for Chris? Nope? All right, well, it looks good, bud.
Thank you.
You are just talking the 9.53 open space. That's the, that's the junkyard?
Yes.
Where's the junkyard that we're talking?
That is the, that is the junkyard that is in reference.
Okay.
Yeah, come on.
The 9.53 acres isn't?
It's not the junkyard.
It's not the junkyard.
No, the 9.53 is our dedication.
It's the total open space.
Yeah, the green box that says open space, 9.53 acres, is just like saying, hey, the green space shown above is 9.53 acres, that all of the green space is on his property, nothing off of his property.
Say your name again.
David Schilt, Delmont Consultants.
Thanks.
125 Colorado Avenue.
So, where's the junkyard?
It's where that green box is located.
The green box is happening.
The green box is a reference. It's just purely for, just showing, hey, green is open space.
Green and green match.
Okay.
Yeah, so no, all of the number calculations are all his property alone. Yes.
Label happens to be on the junkyard.
Yes, yeah.
We will move the label.
Yeah, move the label next time. Yeah, I just wanted, yeah, one simple summary from my perspective. It's gorgeous, it's amazing. Too many people from the front range are going to come over, and it's a nice neighborhood, really nice neighborhood.
Thank you.
So, but it's part of that spectrum that we talked about earlier, that it is something very different than, but it's something else that's needed in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, just on the, it didn't look in the flyby thing. It looked like a lot of one-story still. Were there two-story in there, too? And just didn't really see them?
Yeah, there, if you, the video is pretty jumbled, so I'm not sure what happened there. But, yeah, there's, we have several two-stories. We can take any of the one-stories and add a second story. So, we can really tailor these things, you know. Once we have, inside of our five designs, we can really tailor those five designs. You know, not to give away the whole cat's pajamas, but essentially, somebody will be able to get online and build out their Ford F-150, but it's going to be a house. So, here's this, map this, click that, add a garage, add three garages, add a second story, and the price will all be, you know, it'll be right there in front of their face. There will be no bid process. There will be, this is the cost of the home. And then, we'll update our pricing as we go.
Nice. With the height of the potential two-stories, obviously, the code, 35 feet, are any of those designs close to that?
No, under.
Okay, cool. Make sure your garages are big enough for trucks. That's all I got to say. There isn't a single development in this town that you can park a new F-150 in, so.
Can't even park it in my own house.
Yeah, hopefully, your garages are, yeah.
It is a 25-foot setback, setback. So, that's why, I didn't even bring it up.
Yeah, hopefully, your garages are big enough. All right, well, yeah, it looks great, bud.
Thank you.
Good work. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm sorry, ma'am, we closed the public comment portion, so unfortunately not. Yeah, if it's a question for the developer, by all means, you can ask them afterwards. Or if it's a question for staff, same thing. You can reach out to any of them whenever they're working. All right, in that case, we've got nothing to decide on this one, so we're done with that agenda item. Okay, and that closes the whole public portion of tonight's hearings. Staff, do we have any other business?
I'll just bring up as far as the next meetings go. So, we do have a meeting date scheduled for the 14th of December. We do have items for that meeting. Currently, we have no items for the meeting on the 28th. Sorry. All hands tight.
Yeah, hold on. All right, I don't know when your house is built or who built it, but they definitely didn't build mine. No. All right, Jase. So, what we got? We got, 14th is on?
Yeah, yes, we're going back, sorry. The 14th is on, so December 14th, we will have a meeting. We've got, I want to say, we do have a handful of items. We have nothing scheduled on the 28th. I don't know that we'll have quorum on the 28th. We will likely cancel the 28th. I'll state that. Unless there's a change in the coming probably week, which I'll certainly keep you posted on, right now, we can just tentatively cancel that one.
Okay.
You got to bring Christmas cookies on the 14th?
Yeah.
Sounds good. I'm not a cook, but my wife is, so.
So, yep, I will not be here either on the 14th. I will be somewhere over the Atlantic Ocean on the 14th, so.
So, I guess I'll just ask, yeah, who knows that they will be?
Okay.
Okay.
I'll be here.
Okay.
Well, we got a quorum, so.
Perfect.
I'm here.
All right. I only have one comment, and it was something that Phoebe noticed in the, at least in that one agenda item for the rezone. There wasn't an inclusion for a denial motion. So, if you didn't, you know, you want to make a motion that I don't want the rezone, that wasn't in our packet. Is there a reason why for that specific agenda item?
Yeah, so sometimes, because there's multiple actions that can in theory be taken, and this was convoluted in the last meeting, truthfully. So, we pulled it from this one to essentially, if there was going to be discussion amongst planning commission as to what other motion might be carried, we could talk it through essentially instead of having something written in there. So, that was more or less the reason for it. We can always include a recommendation of denial. Know that if we don't, that can always be made and/or another motion, so.
I would ask that we make sure we have both on all things moving forward. Just, you know, in that instance, you know, if Phoebe wanted to make the motion, it's just much easier, like rather than trying to come up with like, like how to word it, it's right there, and, you know.
Certainly was no intent to trick or mistake anybody because I think that, again, the convoluted nature of the last one, and specifically, I think, how the motion was stated, how the other recommendation was stated in the last one, we didn't want to cause any red flags. We certainly could have talked it through had you had questions about it. I apologize for maybe not flagging that earlier. But, yeah, that's the reason for it. We can certainly include that moving forward.
Okay, thank you. You good?
It looks a little leading towards there won't, there should not be a denial. We're only giving them an approval.
That's fair. And I guess, so truthfully, most jurisdictions only have one recommendation, and that's it. And then, they essentially, if that's denied, then they can open it up for further discussion. So, that's something to note, because that is the staff's recommendation. We can include the other one, but that's not the recommendation from staff at the end of the day. But with that said, we'll certainly have essentially a motion for approval and a motion for denial moving forward on all applications and/or whatever is different if it's a different application type.
Thanks, Jase. You guys need anything else? Any other questions?
Well, you know, when they come up for the plan, you better have the good track. Because those same people are going to be here saying the same thing.
Yep. All right, guys, I just heard a motion to adjourn from Jan. Phoebe seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're donezo.